Helping lead a modern city of over 140,000 residents is a complex undertaking. What have you done to prepare yourself for this responsibility? What experience do you have with Sunnyvale City Government?
Well, good evening. My name is Andy Fraser. I'm running for Sunnyvale City Council, seat one. We formed a group with Tap Merrick and I, and we've got a few other residents involved, and we basically canvassed pretty much the whole city. We collected about 700 people, residents, who said they were supporting us as far as seeing some reforms. And we spoke at most of the city council meetings for the first year or so. As I was attending all these meetings, and I started realizing that there were many other things going on in the city that I wanted to work on, also look at addressing, I started, I made a point to make sure I attended every city council meeting, every Thursday night. I read all the agenda items, I studied everything, I still do. And so I actually am trying to follow all the issues that would come before a council member if I'm elected. I've also served on the Sustainability Commission for one year, which focuses on one of my passions, which is environmental sustainability. And I've also met with many of the city staffers, city manager many times, and I've basically also plotted out all the topics in the city that I need to know in order to effectively be a council member.
Okay. Done for this attempt. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, hello. My name is Gustav Larsen. I serve on the Sunnyvale Planning Commission. I've served for the last three years. And I'm running because Sunnyvale needs leaders who have experience with city government to serve on city council. About five years ago, before I was even on the Planning Commission, the Palo Alto Medical Foundation Clinic near my home was planning to expand. And a lot of the neighbors, myself included, were concerned about the size of the project and the traffic it would bring through the neighborhood and parking. And so we got together, we worked very hard with the camp, with the city. And it was an uphill climb, let me tell you, because we were starting behind the curve. We had to scramble to figure out what we needed to know and who we needed to talk to. And after that project was over and we got a good outcome on it, I swore to myself that I would never be in that position again. It was just too much to learn too fast. So I enrolled in Leadership Sunnyvale, took that program, and then after that was appointed to the Planning Commission. So I've spent the last three years learning about many different issues throughout the city, reading the reports in detail. Let me tell you, it's one thing to read it if you're going to attend, just listen to the meeting, and it's another thing to read a report when you have to make a decision and you have to understand every single part of that report. So I'm running to make sure I make a difference for the citizens of Sunnyvale. Thank you.
Well done. Next.
Good evening, Dan Sunnyvale. My name is Steve Hoffman. I'm running for seat two. The reason I got involved in politics in Sunnyvale was about, well, first of all, it was about two years ago. I had a personal issue that did not get resolved with the city staff, and so, like many residents, I figured, okay, well, we've got a council, I've got an opportunity to speak to them for three minutes, and surely they'll understand my problem and they'll fix everything up. And what I realized was that nothing happened. And so I came back again, and I made better and better presentations, and still nothing happened. But during those meetings, I started to find out, that I started to see that many other residents were coming out with their own issues, and the council pretty much had a deaf ear with all residents. I also noticed that they did not have a deaf ear when it came to issues that pertain to developers and city employee unions. I started to get involved. I ran for council two years ago. I spent about $1,500. My opponent spent about $60,000, and got about 1,800 votes more than me. This time around, I'm coming. I'm not alone on my issues. There's two other candidates that believe similarly on issues of the importance of ethics and integrity in the council, and that's what I plan to bring. Thank you.
So hello. My name is Glenn Hendricks. I'm running for Sunnyvale City Council, seat number two. The question is, what have I done to prepare myself? I'm currently, I've been on the Planning Commission for the last three years. I've been the chairman of the Planning Commission. For the three years prior to that, I was on the city's personnel board, and I was the chairman of the Personnel Board at one time. I've also attended and taken Leadership Sunnyvale. I've been a member of the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee on Paramedic Service in Sunnyvale, and I've been a member of the last Charter Review Committee that was in Sunnyvale. And I was born and raised here in the city. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Gustavo Maganha, and I grew up here in Sunnyvale. I was born and raised here. And things that I've done in order to prepare myself for this, for this attempt, is I took a public policy class in my undergraduate, I signed a degree in university, learning about different ways city government works. I also led, when I was there, I was also the Multi-Culture Center Director, and I led an organization of over 500 people there, and one of the only completely student-run organizations in the entire country. So this is an organization that has a very large budget, and when I came in, it had an extremely large deficit. I slashed, I slashed that deficit and left the organization with a surplus when I left. While I was there, I also created a program to promote higher education throughout the Bay Area by increasing enrollment of low-income and diverse students. And this is a program that I started that now has a national reach, so the entire country is reached by this program that I started there. Another thing that I have done is just be here, be consistent in going out and meeting people and asking, what are the issues that you guys care about? And not just specific people, not just people who voted in their last election, but every individual that I can find, from someone who is under the voting age, to someone who's homeless, someone who's rich, someone who's poor. I've talked to every single individual that I can, because every single Sunnyvale resident's opinion is important to me, and it is valuable, and that's what I've done.
Hello. My name is Jim Griffith. I currently serve as the Vice Mayor of the City of Sunnyvale. I got involved in city activities back in 2004, when I was looking for something to do in the land of public service. And I found the Board of Library Trustees. I've spent my entire life in a library. That appealed to me. So I applied for the board, it was accepted, and a year later, I became the chair. That got me involved in city council, where I had to go before the city council on a number of issues. And the more I did this, the more I realized just how important city government is. It is the level of government that has the greatest impact on our lives. So when it came 2009, and the economy was in the toilet, we were all dealing with the Great Recession. Currently, I serve on a number of bodies, including on the chair of the Santa Clara County Recycling Waste Reduction Commission. I serve as Sunnyvale's representative on the Caltrain Modernization Local Policymakers Group. I'm the only elected official on a new attempt to create a homeless and low-income housing joint powers authority in Santa Clara County. And I also serve on the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. I've built a lot of relationships with our colleagues in other cities, which has served us well in order to try and work collaboratively on a number of the problems that we face that can really be best served as a regional body. Looking forward for the opportunity to continue to serve for the next four or five years. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Tap Merrick. If you can't hear me, raise your hand.
We need you on the mic, so the camera will get you. Thank you.
The camera and the mic don't have to be attached. Okay. My name's Tap Merrick. I'm a 36-year resident of Sunnyvale. I worked for the Federal Reserve System for 10 years, including presentations to Congress, reviewing the expense reports of the 12 regional reserve banks. They transferred me out to San Francisco to solve their cost accounting problems. I wrote San Francisco's Cost Accounting Book. I have coached youth sports for 19 seasons in the area. Many of your children I may have coached, or I was president of bowling baseball when your kids, if you're my age, or approximately my age. Some of you, some of you look a little younger. Maybe you are even kind of possibly yourselves. I've been involved with the city for nine years. People came to me and said, Tap, can you do something about Peterson Field? And so we gathered the neighborhood together, and we got them together, and we came before the council and before the school district. Tap, can you do something about Santa Clara Square and its nine stories? We got the neighborhood together, and matter of fact, Mayor Hamilton came to the Santa Clara Council to plead in our favor to lower the size of Santa Clara Square.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next question's on climate. 95% of climate scientists agree, according to NASA, that climate warming trends over the past century are likely due to human activities, and most of leading scientific organizations in the world have issued public statements endorsing this position. The vast majority of scientists anticipate serious consequences if society continues on the current path. What are the most important actions that you would advocate that Sunnyvale government could take to significantly, significantly reduce our community's contribution to climate change? What adaptation is necessary, and how should the city address this? And what would, what would adaptation measures look like? And what side benefits do you see from acting both to minimize climate, you know, climate change impacts and to adapt to the ones that are already underway? So our first person is going to be Mr. Larsen.
Great. Well, thank you. Wow, 90 seconds to answer all that. Let's see. So the actions the city can take, the city's currently undertaking a climate action plan that looks at the different steps we can take to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. The single biggest thing we can do is to implement what are called, it's called community choice aggregation, which is an alternative to PG&E, to have a greener mix of power in the city. However, that would only get us about halfway to where we need to be. There are a lot of other changes that we need to make, and it's going to be a lot of small changes that will all add up together. We need more transit-oriented development, more energy efficiency in commercial and residential buildings. We need to have more energy-efficient fuels available. There's just a very long list of steps that need to be taken. So we need a council that's able to understand all these complex steps and their interactions. We will also have to pay attention to water. I think water is an under-talked-about issue, but the rim fire near Hetch Hetchy, I think, showed just how fragile our water supply is. And in 25 or 30 years, the current rate, the current water supplies will be spoken for. We really have to start conserving water and talking about new sources of water. Thank you.
We're going next to Andy.
Well, good evening. When I was on the Sustainability Commission last year, the first day I showed up, they asked me if I'd like to join these Community Choice Aggregation Subcommittee. And I said, sure. I didn't know what it was, but I quickly learned about it. This was the committee that Jerry Glaser led, and what we did was, they looked at, a community choice aggregation has already been implemented in Marin County, and there are many other municipalities in California that are going to implement it very quickly. So we were looking at, what would it take to get Sunnyvale on board, and also, how do we, you know, how much benefit would we see? By, 40, almost 40% of our energy is consumed, is, sorry, 40% of our greenhouse gas is created by electricity consumption. So community choice aggregation is the single and easiest thing we can do to have the biggest impact on reducing global greenhouse gas emissions. We also need to replace the water pollution control plant. It's 50 years old. It's, it's one facility, it's the single largest consumer of energy in the city, and also the single largest producer of greenhouse gases. A new plant will run more efficiently and cleaner. It will also allow us to produce much more and higher quality recycled water, which is a big problem in Sunnyvale right now. So once the water pollution control plant is replaced, it can produce more recycled water. Then we need to build out the recycled water network so we can actually get good recycled water to the whole city.
Mr. Mayor, you're next.
Okay. You know, I might spill something here. Okay. Certainly, I go along with everybody else that's going to speak about conserving energy. Certainly improving mass transit north and south, working with the different corporations to have a joint transit system, Google and Gemantech and Apple, and perhaps the city putting funding into that, so it becomes part of a city effort. Reduce building heights, quit trying to jam so many people in, because that's just going to increase more traffic problems. Certainly, the community choice aggravate, aggregation, aggravation, there we go. I've worked from home for 29 of my work years. I don't commute. I, my commute is across the hall. That's, if we can work from home, we can cut down on a lot of our energy. When I go to the store, I walk to the grocery store. Encourage people to do that. Create, it creates safer neighborhoods, you get to know your neighbors, and it's actually good exercise. Thank you.
Well, I certainly echo what was said about community choice aggregation. That's one of the biggest wins we can get almost immediately. I think the other one that's really key is transit-oriented development. Being able to design and place housing businesses and all the services we need around transit. One of the big plans we're working on, something called Lawrence Station Area Plan, which would be sort of the epitome of this. Being able to, it's all well and good to say, let's work in your home, but you still have to go and do shopping. So being able to place homes next to businesses, next to shopping, will cut down on the amount of transit that people actually need to do. Encouraging organizations like VTA to switch to technologies such as CNG, Liquid Natural Gas, will also help them cut down. Water is one of the big ones that we really need to worry about, because not only are we dealing with a water shortage, but water burns a lot of energy to clean and to transport. One of the things we're actively working on is extending our recycled water system down Wolf Avenue in order to reach the New Apple campus and get into Cupertino. Being able, every gallon of recycled water that we use is a gallon of potable water that we don't use. And that's a big win for us going forward if we can improve those kinds of technologies. Some of that will come with the replacement of our pollution control plant, some of it requires dedicated effort, and we need to understand that and support the dedicated effort to improve that system.
Yes, please.
So what I would recommend, in order to distinguish myself from my fellow candidates, is that what I would, I would suggest, we follow the EXF model. EXF has the lowest waste of any city in the entire United States. And so some of the ways they're able to do that is by having, they had source reduction, they reuse extensively, they have mandatory recycling and composting programs, which the composting program itself cut emissions by 12%. And they backed these and make sure they worked through innovative policies, financial incentives, and outreach and education. So I strongly advocate, we can, we follow this model, which has proved to be extremely successful as the number one in the entire country. And if we can, if we can work with this model, we can be number two, maybe number one in the entire country.
So I think the first thing that we need to go ahead and do is actually approve Sunnyvale's Climate Action Plan. There's a group that's been working on that, and one of the statements in it starts with "local governments playing a central role in reducing greenhouse gas emissions and mitigating the potential impacts of climate change." And it lists 10 different things that we should do. That's where we should go ahead and start. This is a complex issue. It's all linked with traffic, housing, business, how we move people around, so it's not a one, just single answer for what goes on. I also agree that we should go and implement a CCA. I was ready to go ahead and study in a Planning Commission meeting, a study session item to go ahead and for the city to look at that, but I was actually asked to let somebody in the Sustainability Commission go ahead and move forward with that, so I went ahead and did that. One other area where we can go ahead and try and take a look at is in, I hope we're going to get to talk more about transit, but Measure 8 dollars, the original proposals that were done there, there's a flyer that I'd be willing to share with everybody that shows if you implement light rail on Stevens Creek Boulevard out to 85, that is a way to go ahead and decrease the amount of traffic and cars that are on the road for people that are trying to do this north-south traffic through Sunnyvale to get from Cupertino and San Jose out to the Mountain View area. So those are things I think we should go ahead and look at.
Okay. Hi. My name is Steve Hoffman. I'm running for seat two. Okay, so I would like to echo what Andy Fraser said. The community aggregation program is paramount, and is probably the single most important thing that we can, that the city can do. The second thing I also agree is the replacement of the recycling facility. And one thing I just wanted to point out, since we all agree on pretty much those two things, just so that you can differentiate between us, the one and only one organization that could be in opposition to the community choice aggregation is PG&E. And the reason is that they will not benefit from this. I know that they are in support of it, and that's partly, probably because it's the law right now. But they will be the losers in this program, and they have donated money, and my opponent has accepted money from PG&E. So just something to consider as you're considering. I'd like to just complete my time here, just pointing out that there's a lot of things that we can do on a personal level. And we can use government to force our opinions as leaders over the people, or we can educate people. And I truly believe that what we really should focus on is more educating, because nobody likes anything shut down their throat. Thank you.
And thank you for the audience feedback, because you need to be able to differentiate. The whole point is to see where the differences and similarities are. So the next question's on housing. The U.S. Census Bureau reports that the average monthly rent in Santa Clara County is the highest in the nation. The Silicon Valley Leadership Group's annual CEO survey reports that housing is the single top challenge for employers in Silicon Valley. Air pollution, greenhouse gas emissions, congestion increase when workers commute long distances because appropriate housing is not available near their jobs. What, if anything, should the city do to address the housing situation and housing affordability issues? And we'll begin with Mr. Hoffman.
Okay, so Steve Hoffman again. It's a big problem, and part of it is because we've got a lot of jobs over here, and so a lot of people like to move to this area, which obviously drives the price of housing up. One of the simplistic ways that some people believe to control the price of housing is simply to build a whole lot more, and by building more and building at higher and higher densities, you create more supply, and therefore the price goes down. The problem with this is that with regard to real estate, it just doesn't work that way. If it did, New York, Shanghai, Moscow, Hong Kong, we'd all have cheap housing. The other way to reduce the value of houses, or to lower, make housing more affordable is to do what happened in Detroit, and that's to reduce the jobs. And that obviously does reduce the value of housing. So what can we do about it? It's a big problem. I'm not sure what to do about it. I'm not a big fan of the whole idea of having small affordability hous, trying to transfer or trying to create affordable housing in an unnatural manner, because essentially what it's doing is it's really not making any change. It's just creating a few lucky winners, and it's, it's making, some people feel good that they're doing something about it, and I don't believe it's really doing much.
And Mr. Hendricks will be next.
Hello. My name's Glenn Hendricks. So I sit on the Planning Commission today. I've been there on the Planning Commission for three years. How we go ahead and manage housing is through the zoning and the different codes that we have in place, where you go ahead and you define for developers, where are the places where we want housing, what types of housing we want. What I think we should do to go ahead and increase housing, and housing is not just a matter of increasing, it's, the reason we want to go ahead and have more housing is so that people can live in a great, wonderful place that we have, we call here in Sunnyvale. They can experience the weather that we have, the great location, be able to be close to jobs, have their kids go to good schools, and things like that, and be able to have housing closer to where work is, so people have the opportunity to be able to have a shorter commute for what's going on. When you go ahead and build, we should be trying to build closer to where transit is, so people have the opportunity to take advantage of traffic, or transit. We should be doing a better job of working with VTA. I don't, I don't think VTA's doing a good job for Sunnyvale right now, today. They're not giving us the kind of transit infrastructure. Right now, we have point-to-point transit components. We need to be building a transit fabric and working with VTA to go ahead and get that. And if we increase that transit fabric, then when we put more housing in that is near some of those transit corridors, people have advantage to take advantage of the great things in Sunnyvale, and be able to use transit to go ahead and get around.
Mr. Maganha.
I'm Gustavo Maganha. So I think what needs to be addressed is that transit and building, building more routes is only a small piece of the puzzle. The bigger question is, even if you have these transit routes, the people who are using these transit systems need to be able to afford where they're living, they need to be able to pay for the rent. So I think the bigger overarching issue is being, for these, for many workers to be paid a livable wage. Because you can, you can use the bus all you want, it can be right next to you, but if you're, you're making the minimum wage, and you can't afford your rent at all, you can't afford to feed your kids, what's the point? How are you ever going to afford to live here? I think that's the bigger piece of the puzzle, making sure that the people who work here and live here can afford to live here based on what they're paid. Because otherwise, no one's going to be able to stay. I know, I know my parents, if they buy, if they try to buy the house that they're in right now, they wouldn't be able to afford it. Sunnyvale, the price, if you didn't buy your house 10, 20 years ago, I mean, I don't know how most people get in now. It's, it's a, it's an issue that drastically affects many, many people in the city. It's an issue that I see that's going to face many of the youth growing up. So many youth that go off to college and come back, and maybe want to rent an apartment here and live, and where they grew up, they're not going to be able to, because they can't afford to live where they grew up, where they want to live, because it's so expensive. So I think that's something that we should really address and really push for.
Mr. Griffith.
Well, I agree with the comment about the minimum wage. We were, in fact, we did start looking at a minimum wage increase, it's still on the books, it's a study issue that I proposed, but now it looks like the governor has preempted that, so we, I don't know if we're going to be going forward with that. On the housing side, I think one of the best things we can do is we can try and regionalize the effort. All of us are probably familiar with these infamous ABAG numbers, the RENA numbers, that where they tell us what we have to build. And that becomes a real challenge for us, because we are a built-out city.
Sorry, just in case people don't know the acronym, could you say what that means?
Yes, RENA is Regional Housing Needs Allocation.
And ABAG?
And ABAG is the Association of Bay Area Governments. They come along and they say, you need to zone for this. Whether or not we do that, we've never really met the numbers that they want. We do a little bit better than other cities. But San Mateo County does something interesting. While the cities still get their RENA numbers, they can trade between cities. So if the city's willing to take it and to pick up transit dollars, they'll do so. We're starting on the Santa Clara County Cities Association to look at the exact same thing, something I've been pushing for, so that if Gilroy, or San Jose, or Milpitas has room and wants transportation dollars, we can give them some of our allotment that maybe we can't handle. The other thing we need to do is look at homeless and low-income housing as a regional problem, and we're starting. Like I said, I'm serving on a joint powers that's going to try and look at doing this county-wide, where we can maybe pool money, be able to get a bigger bang for the buck out of the money that we have, and do much larger projects in centralized areas where there is space, tied into the sharing of RENA numbers. If we can do this, then maybe we can, we can be more effective in what we're trying to do.
Okay. Tap Merrick for Council, seat three. Mr. Griffith had talked about transit-oriented development. I'm not sure it works in Sunnyvale. The idea being, you build higher and taller near the transit center, and people are going to take mass transit. The problem is, the trains run kind of north and south from Gilroy to San Francisco, which is a big improvement over what they used to do, but they don't run across Sunnyvale up to Lockheed. So now you've got to transfer, and maybe you have to wait 20 or 30 minutes for the bus to do that. I used to work in San Francisco. It took me two hours each day. I loved the train. It was an hour and 10 minutes on the train, and I had to get to the train station, and then from the train station, I walked to work. So I got to exercise, and so it was good, but it was two hours each way each day. And now they want to build Lawrence Station with only one bus, the 328 running down Lawrence, and I think it's up to two times a day north and two times a day south. Well, that's hardly a bus system. So I don't think transit-oriented development is going to be successful yet. We do need to improve the transportation, as I mentioned before. Water, I would think that we ought to consider importing water from Oregon, just like we've imported it from, from the Sierras, because just building a canal that'll bring water down south, because we keep adding people and we're running out of water. Thank you.
Mr. Fraser.
Good evening. I'm Andy Fraser. So if we want to look, if we want to talk about building more housing to make it more affordable, this one thing that you have to really think about, that is Sunnyvale is a very attractive place to live. We have great weather, great culture, we have a lot of jobs here, and so no matter how much housing you build, no matter how much you try to drive the price down, you're just going to get more people moving in. And if you're trying to solve the, the cost of housing situation by building, building more, it's an unwinnable game. You'll never actually get there. Now, having said that, we do need
I know that they are in support of it, and that's partly probably because it's the law right now. But they will be the losers in this program. And they have donated money, and my opponent has accepted money from PG&E. So just something to consider as you're considering. I'd like to just complete my time here, just pointing out that there's a lot of things that we can do on a personal level. And we can use government to force our opinions as leaders over the people, or we can educate people. And I truly believe that what we really should focus on is more educating, because nobody likes anything shut down their throat. Thank you.
And thank you for the audience feedback, because you need to be able to differentiate. The whole point is to see where the differences and similarities are. So the next question is on housing. The U.S. Census Bureau reports that the average monthly rent in Santa Clara County is the highest in the nation. The Silicon Valley Leadership Group's annual CEO survey reports that housing is a single top challenge for employers in Silicon Valley. Air pollution, greenhouse gas emissions, congestion increase when workers commute long distances, because appropriate housing is not available near their jobs. What, if anything, should the city do to address the housing situation and housing affordability issues? And we'll begin with Mr. Hoffman.
Okay, so Steve Hoffman again. It's a big problem, and part of it is because we've got a lot of jobs over here, and so a lot of people like to move to this area, which obviously drives the price of housing up. One of the simplistic ways that some people believe to control the price of housing is simply to build a whole lot more. And by building more and building at higher and higher densities, you create more supply, and therefore the price goes down. The problem with this is that with regard to real estate, it just doesn't work that way. If it did, New York, Shanghai, Moscow, Hong Kong, we'd all have cheap housing. The other way to reduce the value of houses, or to lower, make housing more affordable, is to do what happened in Detroit, and that's to reduce the jobs. And that obviously does reduce the value of housing. So what can we do about it? It's a big problem. I'm not sure what to do about it. I'm not a big fan of the whole idea of having small affordability houses, trying to transfer or trying to create affordable housing in an unnatural manner. Because essentially what it's doing is it's really not making any change. It's just creating a few lucky winners. And it's making people, some people feel good that they're doing something about it, and I don't believe it's really doing much.
And Mr. Hendricks will be next.
Hello, my name's Glenn Hendricks. So I sit on the Planning Commission today. I've been there on the Planning Commission for three years. How we go ahead and manage housing is through the zoning and the different codes that we have in place, where you go ahead and you define for developers, where are the places where we want housing, what types of housing we want. What I think we should do to go ahead and increase housing, and housing is not just a matter of increasing. It's the reason we want to go ahead and have more housing is so that people can live in a great wonderful place that we call here in Sunnyvale. They can experience the weather that we have, the great location, be able to be close to jobs, have their kids go to good schools, and things like that. Be able to have housing closer to where work is, so people have the opportunity to be able to have a shorter commute for what's going on. When you go ahead and build, we should be trying to build closer to where transit is, so people have the opportunity to take advantage of traffic, or transit. We should be doing a better job of working with VTA. I don't think VTA is doing a good job for Sunnyvale right now today. They're not giving us the kind of transit infrastructure. Right now, we have point-to-point transit components. We need to be building a transit fabric and working with VTA to go ahead and get that. And if we increase that transit fabric, then when we put more housing in that is near some of those transit corridors, people have advantage to take advantage of the great things in Sunnyvale, and be able to use transit to go ahead and get around.
Mr. McGaughn.
I'm Gustavo McGaughn. So I think what needs to be addressed is that transit and building more routes is only a small piece of the puzzle. The bigger question is, even if you have these transit routes, the people who are using these transit systems need to be able to afford where they're living. They need to be able to pay for the rent. So I think the bigger overarching issue is being, for many workers, be paid a livable wage. Because you can use the bus all you want, it could be right next to you, but if you're making the minimum wage, and you can't afford your rent at all, you can't afford to feed your kids, what's the point? How are you ever going to afford to live here? I think that's the bigger piece of the puzzle, making sure that the people who work here and live here can afford to live here based on what they're paid. Because otherwise, no one's going to be able to stay. I know my parents, if they try to buy the house that they're in right now, they wouldn't be able to afford it. Sunnyvale, the price, if you didn't buy your house 10, 20 years ago, I mean, I don't know how most people get in now. It's an issue that drastically affects many people in this city. It's an issue that I see that's going to face many of the youth growing up. So many youth that go off to college and come back and maybe want to rent an apartment here and live where they grew up, they're not going to be able to, because they can't afford to live where they grew up, where they want to live, because it's so expensive. So I think that's something that we should really address and really push for.
Mr. Griffith.
Well, I agree with the comment about the minimum wage. We were, in fact, we did start looking at a minimum wage increase. It's still on the books. It's a study issue that I proposed, but now it looks like the governor has preempted that, so I don't know if we're going to be going forward with that. On the housing side, I think one of the best things we can do is we can try and regionalize the effort. All of us are probably familiar with the infamous A-BAG numbers, the RENA numbers, that they tell us what we have to build. And that becomes a real challenge for us, because we are a built-out city.
Sorry, just in case people don't know the acronym, could you say what that means?
Yes, RENA is Regional Housing Needs Allocation.
And A-BAG?
And A-BAG is the Association of Bay Area Governments. They come along and they say, you need to zone for this. Whether or not we do that, we've never really met the numbers that they want. We do a little bit better than other cities. But San Mateo County does something interesting. While cities still get their RENA numbers, they can trade between cities. So if the city is willing to take it and to pick up transit dollars, they'll do so. We're starting on the Santa Clara County Cities Association to look at the exact same thing, something I've been pushing for, so that if Gilroy, or San Jose, or Milpitas has room and wants transportation dollars, we can give them some of our allotment that maybe we can't handle. The other thing we need to do is look at homeless and low-income housing as a regional problem. And we're starting, like I said, I'm serving on a joint powers that's going to try and look at doing this county-wide, where we can maybe pool money, be able to get a bigger bang for the buck out of the money that we have, and do much larger projects in centralized areas where there is space, tied into the sharing of RENA numbers. If we can do this, then maybe we can be more effective in what we're trying to do.
Okay, Tap Merrick for Council, Seat Three. Mr. Griffith had talked about transit-oriented development. I'm not sure it works in Sunnyvale. The idea being, you build higher and taller near the transit center, and people are going to take mass transit. The problem is, the trains run kind of north and south from Gilroy to San Francisco, which is a big improvement over what they used to do, but they don't run across Sunnyvale up to Lockheed. So now you've got to transfer, and maybe you have to wait 20 or 30 minutes for the bus to do that. I used to work in San Francisco. It took me two hours each day. I loved the train. It was an hour and 10 minutes on the train, and I had to get to the train station, and then from the train station, I walked to work. So I got exercised, and so it was good, but it was two hours each way each day. And now they want to build Lawrence Station with only one bus, the 328 running down Lawrence, and I think it's up to two times a day north and two times a day south. Well, that's hardly a bus system. So I don't think transit-oriented development is going to be successful yet. We do need to improve the transportation, as I mentioned before. Water, I would think that we ought to consider importing water from Oregon, just like we've imported it from Sierra's, because just building a canal that'll bring water down south, because we keep adding people, and we're running out of water. Thank you.
Mr. Fraser.
Good evening, I'm Andy Fraser. So if we want to look, if we want to talk about building more housing to make it more affordable, there's one thing that you have to really think about, that is Sunnyvale is a very attractive place to live. We have great weather, great culture, we have a lot of jobs here. And so no matter how much housing you build, no matter how much you try to drive the price down, you're just going to get more people moving in. And if you're trying to solve the cost of housing situation by building, building more, it's an unwinnable game. You'll never actually get there. Now, having said that, we do need some more housing. Focusing the housing around transit-oriented sites like Lawrence Station of the downtown does make sense. The problem that I have is that once you take a good idea like this, and all these different organizations start getting involved, eventually something goes terribly wrong with the details. When I first heard about Lawrence Station, I imagined three-story, mixed-use, office and retail and housing. Sounds like it makes sense. More traffic on the trains, people who can buy into here will use the public transportation. When I actually sat through some of the Lawrence Station meetings, they're talking about 70, 80-foot-tall, high-density buildings all along the northwest side of Lawrence Expressway, all of them down Kafer. There's no way that most of the residents want that, and the city can't handle that much growth. So transit-oriented development is a good idea, but you have to keep it down to scale.
Mr. Larson.
Hello, I'm Gustav Larson, running for Sunnyvale City Council, Seat One. So on transit-oriented development, actually, there are a lot of people today who would like to live in transit-oriented development-type neighborhoods. Preferences are changing. People want options. There are people who don't want a single-family home to take care of the yard on the weekend. There are seniors who want to downsize, who perhaps can't drive anymore, and want to live in a more walkable area. And the way that you really make an area walkable is you get enough people, and you get enough shops, and you get enough jobs, all in that area, so everything is close to each other. And the Lawrence Station, I think, is a perfect opportunity to do that. I was over there at the Lawrence Caltrain Station recently, and I saw a shuttle bus show up from an employer in the afternoon. And it was like a clown car, watching all the people who kept getting off and kept getting off. It was amazing how many people were on that shuttle bus. That's how people get to and from the Caltrain Station. And I'm also interested in affordable housing. On the Planning Commission, as the chair, last year I shepherded the Armory Project through the Planning Commission. That's the first affordable housing project in the city in seven years, to provide 117 units for low-income and homeless folks. And the city can do a lot more to support those projects by acquiring land that can then be sold, because it takes a while to get the funding together for those projects. Thank you.
And if I might count that to everybody? Please give any questions you would like answered to Adina Levin or Bina Chang now. And this is the only time we're collecting questions. They're going to sort through them and we'll just answer a few of them. Question four, transportation. Auto traffic is increasing as our economy improves and as our region grows. Vehicles that run on fossil fuels contribute significantly to air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions. In fact, a recent NYG study indicated that emissions from road transportation are the leading single cause of air pollution, causing 53,000 premature U.S. deaths each year. And 35% of Sunnyvale's greenhouse gas emissions come from auto-centered transportation. In fact, for the Bay Area, it's 50%. So I think Sunnyvale has more industry than some of the other cities in the area. What sort of solution should Sunnyvale and the region be considering to help an expanding population get around more sustainably? And I also want to add, my understanding is that the Sunnyvale City Council decided not to pursue bus rapid transit along El Camino. And so do you agree with that position, that VPSY, no or not? First is Mr. Hendricks.
My name's Glenn Hendricks, so you can see me every time. So the question is about auto emissions. So you could go down the road, the route of saying, here, let's try and convert everything to an electric car. But that's not going to go ahead and deal with anything but what is the traffic side of what goes on. You just take, if you're concerned about traffic on the road and increase in traffic, you just change it from a gas-producing one to a battery-operated one. And that would help with the greenhouse gases, but it doesn't help with the overall traffic pattern, what we need to go ahead and deal with. So I think it really goes back to the conversation we were having just with the last question, to try and take a look at how do we go ahead and be able to utilize mass transit better, be able to work with VTA, get more of a fabric of transit across the city and across the county. Because it's not just good to go ahead and have people be able to move well within the city, but they need to be able to go between cities as well for what goes on. The second part of the question, I think you were asking about BRT. So BRT, I think El Camino is a through avenue. We should be looking at what is traffic going to look like there 25 or 30 years from now. So I believe that we should, the city should have gone ahead and looked at the study, and let's see what the study would have told us about that. If the city had gone ahead and said yes to that vote, VTA was going to get millions of dollars of additional work on El Camino. It had nothing to do with BRT, whether or not BRT went in or not. So I think we should have studied that, as we look at the long-term impacts of traffic on El Camino.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi, my name is Steve Hoffman, Seat Two. Okay, so the question was quite a, again, hard to cover this in just about 90 seconds. With regard to vehicles, transportation, unlike my opponent, I actually am a very big fan of electrifying cars. I think that one of the missed opportunities that we had as a state was the elimination of the electric golf carts that can be road safety safe. With regard to El Camino bus rapid, El Camino bus rapid transit system, yeah, well, we could have played the system and made some money out of that here, but it was just not a good idea. I am not a big fan of the light rail. The reason is that it just doesn't have the ridership. For anybody that is driving a car, you've just lost a potential lane over there, which means more traffic. We've all had the experience of having to wait for extended periods of time at the intersections. The alternative for that would have been electric buses that could drive on car lanes, and that way they could share it with the cars, and at any point, you could go ahead and transition it to a bus lane only. Again, I see this as a system whereby developers are getting, are using the environment as a mechanism for getting more development.
Mr. Larson. Sir, no, I think it's, he's last on transportation. We're sort of rotating it. We're just trying to give everyone a different chance, so that we don't have the same order over and over again. So Mr. Larson, he's back.
Thank you. Hi, Gustav Larson, Seat One. So I think an important part of the transportation question is that people's preferences are changing. I'm sure you've all seen the shuttle buses that Facebook and Google and Apple and other employers are running around the area. There are a lot of people who don't want to spend their time sitting at the wheel, trying to figure out how to not hit another car. They'd rather get on the bus, open up their laptop, and start working. So more and more people are taking those kinds of shuttles, and I think that's really an important part of the future here. Already, we have, when we approve office buildings, we have what's called a traffic demand management program, where we require employers to reduce trips. A certain percentage of the employees need to come to work in other ways. And so we can ratchet up those programs. We can't expand roads. There's no way to. Our city is built out. There's no land for doing that. So we really have to be creative about considering other approaches. And I would have supported studying bus rapid transit. VTA was willing to bend over backwards just for us to do a study. And we do need more information about how it would work and how it would affect the community, and certainly have our own traffic engineers look at the numbers and tell us, is what VTA telling us realistic or not? But as we move forward in the future, we have to look at options like that. Thank you.
Mr. Fraser.
Good evening, Andy Fraser, Seat One. Regarding Sunnyvale's transportation issues, the first thing we have to recognize is that Sunnyvale's primary transportation challenge is not an east-west problem, which El Camino bus rapid transit was trying to address. Our main transportation bottlenecks are north-south problems. The biggest north-south route we have is Lawrence Expressway. Right now, the main reason it gets backed up is all the traffic lights. The county is moving forward with a plan to do a Lawrence Expressway grade separation. That means they're going to actually raise a good chunk of Lawrence Expressway. So there will no longer be traffic lights at Reed Monroe, sorry, Reed Monroe, Kafer, and Artes. This will speed up the speed of cars on Lawrence Expressway, and also capacity. Secondly, we need to focus a lot on improvements for bicycles and pedestrians. As far as bicycles, the VTA is already starting to move forward with money to develop pedestrian and bicycle lanes along the eastern-west channel. Another, again, north-south route. Pedestrian improvements, I'm not going to have time. I have hundreds of ideas, because I walk a lot, and I know the challenges that pedestrians face. And just quickly, the previous El Camino bus rapid transit plan that was almost proposed to the city, I was absolutely against it. If you want to know what, if, want to know what traffic would be like 20 years from now? Well, if that had passed, El Camino would be a gridlock, and so would many of the roads east and west, immediately north of El Camino.
Mr. Merrick.
Okay, Tap Merrick again. I'm the only one with that name. That's surprising. I think BRT, while it might have been interesting to see what the study was, if it was implemented, it would have created more problems with left turns, because now you've got a center lane devoted specifically to express buses, then you've got the right lane of a three-lane road devoted to the local buses. So I just think it would fog up El Camino much more so than it is. It actually is working now, and I'm happy to see that. I'd like to see them put buses along Lawrence Expressway. Maybe that would reduce traffic. But VTA has been so reluctant to address north-south. But if you go to Europe and have an opportunity to take public transit there, it's great. You typically wait six minutes for the next bus. They have a little sign that says when the next bus is going to be there. And they have like three different routes that go, that go where you are, and you can take either one of those. So it's really great, and I really would like to see the Santa Clara Valley implement something like that. But it's a haphazard process at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Griffith.
Jim Griffith for Seat Three. I'll start with the easy one, BRT. It was absolutely a mistake that we did not go through with the study. I'm a big fan of studies, because rather than speculating wildly on your own personal opinion of what would happen, a study tells you what would happen. That's the value of doing them. In this particular case, we said no. They went off and did the study anyway. And the only difference between the two was we lost out on $32 million that VTA was willing to invest in our north-south routes, which is exactly the big problem that we have. Just by saying yes to a study, we could have solved a lot of our problems. And by missing out on it, it was an opportunity lost, no matter what you think about BRT. One of the big things we need to do is we need to change VTA's mentality. They have a mentality of, we're going to put in transit only after you've demonstrated a need. And with transit, you really need, if you build it, they will come. You need to be able to plan out the city before the traffic hits, rather than after. But a lot of it is little things, like supporting complete streets and safer access to schools, so that there are alternatives for bikes and for pedestrians. One of the things I did, which I think was pretty helpful, was we put in a program requiring wiring for electric vehicles in multi-unit housing, where if you own a condo, you can't put it in without approval from a board that won't do it. But now, anybody who goes into a condo will be able to have the wiring they need, so they could buy an electric vehicle. That's a big thing, a big winner.
Mr. McGaughn.
Could you repeat the entire question, please?
Sure. Transportation. Auto traffic is increasing as our economy improves and our region grows. Vehicles that run on fossil fuels contribute to air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions, and cars cause deaths as well. And 35% of Sunnyvale's greenhouse gas emissions and 50% of the Bay Area's greenhouse gas emissions come from our auto-centered transportation system, which includes 101, which runs through your city. What sort of solutions should Sunnyvale and the region be considering to help an expanding population get around more sustainably? And what is your opinion on the bus rapid transit study that the city council decided not to pursue?
Gustavo McGaughn, for Seat Number Two. And in terms of the study, I think we should have gone through with the study. I'm also a fan of studies, in the sense that you get hard numbers, you get to see exactly what the results would have been. But in terms of Sunnyvale, what we can do, I believe, is increasing transit between north and south, you know, because of all the busy, that's where the majority of the jobs are. And I, you know, driven on Lawrence El Camino and those traffic gridlock towns, I understand the struggle and how hard it is to drive on during those times. But I want to touch on something specifically that also in the question that I think a lot of people just got to, was how do we, how do we address greenhouse emissions regionally? And so one thing that I remember that was done a while back, it was a conjunction or a work, semi-conjunction between Obama and Schwarzenegger, was that they introduced bills to increase the use of cars, or limits that cars needed to, dealers needed to put out cars that had high gas mileage. And so what I think, as a region and as a state, is something we should push for, for continuously pushing up how far cars can get on a gallon, so that way we can help decrease gas emissions. And I think honestly, that's the way we can address fossil fuels, that, you know, keep increasing how much dealers have to put into research to make sure the cars are more gas-efficient. And hopefully, they'll just say, you know what's costing too much money? Let's switch over to electric, and that's what we want to move towards.
And keeping run out of potentially longer and more severe heat and drought due to climate change. The delta at the heart of the California's water supply system is threatened by sea level rise. Our population and businesses are growing. What options do you see for sustainable water supply? What should our city be doing now to prepare for future conditions? And the first speaker will be Mr. Griffith, and then will be Glenn Hendricks.
Hi, I'm Jim Griffith for Seat Three. We've already started looking at this. In fact, the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, which I serve on, has been taking a very long look at exactly what we're going to do with water conservation, because it is a serious option. One of the big pushes they're doing is reclaim the recycled water. It is, like I said, every gallon of recycled water, this is a gallon of potable water that we dump. Being able to put in dual plummets that our landscaping uses the recycled water, while our drinking water is completely separate, is a big thing, and we've been pursuing that actively. We are actively working on extending the recycled water down, like I said, to the Apple campus. When you're talking about recycled water, you really only have two options, one of which is to recycle it, the other is desalinization. And in this area, desalinization is hugely expensive, so it's probably something that we can't use too. But a lot of what we need to do is we need to simply look at the way we use water and the way we approve land use. As it turns out, single-family houses use considerably more water than higher-density housing does. My opponent has said he favors only single-family houses, a good way to run out the water, by doing just nothing but that. That doesn't mean that we should be changing of single-family neighborhoods, but it means that we need to be careful about what buildings we approve and what water use they're going to use. That also means things like approved landscaping, make sure we're using drought-resistant and low-water-use plants in everything that we approve. A lot of the little basic things like that add up to the big savings that we actually need.
Mr. McGaughn.
Gustavo McGaughn, Seat Number Two. So I think one of the ways that we can do this as a city is we need to address the issue that one of the biggest, one of the biggest ways that water is used in California is through electricity. A large amount of water is used up by the extensive excess of amount of electricity homes use every single year in California. And so one of the ways that I propose that we tackle this problem is through outreach and education to our citizens of Sunnyvale, and helping them understand how imperative it is for them to decrease their electricity use. Because by doing this, we can significantly impact the way that a big source of hot water is used in California. And that's something I think that is, needs to be looked into.
Okay, Mr. Hendricks.
My name's Glenn Hendricks, Seat Two. So really what we're talking about is a straight supply versus consumption set problem here. So as has already been said, we should take a look at things we can do to reduce the consumption that we have in the city. Drought-resistant planting, as Jim already said. I believe we're taking a look at Farroks Park or the fields that are there, being able to try and take a look at possibly transitioning those to artificial turf instead of grass. That has to be looked at, because I understand that playing on an artificial field is much warmer than, as an athlete, than as regular turf. But we need to look at zoning rules and other regulations that can be put in place for how we have homes and newer homes that are being built, and newer businesses reduce their consumption of water. I think we should also take a look at, as a city, how we're involved with hedge hedging and our water supply that comes from there. Right now, the city treats that as just a pass-through bill that we all get for ourselves, and we've all seen what's happening with the growth of that bill. So maybe the city should go ahead and implement a plan to go ahead and be, doing a little more due diligence on how the hedge hedgies are doing there and being involved in that process, so they can make sure that the supply that's coming to us is secure and will be there in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman.
Steve Hoffman, Seat Two. So obviously, the one easiest way to reduce the amount of water So obviously, the one easiest way to reduce the amount of water, or at least to curtail its growth, or to curtail the demand of water, is to limit the number of new living units in Sunnyvale. That's the obvious way to do it. I actually find it kind of curious that the people, the candidates amongst us that are in favor of exceeding the city's general plan development in terms of building living units are the ones that are in favor of reducing the, or at least studying the usage of water. They don't go together, one or the other. Again, we can, there's a lot of things that we can do as individuals. I personally have eliminated my lawns in my house, and I've cut my water bill by about $100 a month. That's something that I chose to do. I would not create any legislation to force anybody to do this, but I would like to share my experience and share that there are options. Again, there's two ways that government can go ahead and influence the residents. One is through legislation, and one is through education. I'm a firm believer in education, and maybe a little bit of regulation to encourage it. But education has to come first. Thank you.
Mr. Larson.
Gustav Larson, seat one. So water is really a regional issue. It's not just Sunnyvale. It requires collaboration with all the other cities in the area and also the regional authorities. We're not going to solve this all by ourselves. And actually, it's not obvious that curtailing growth would solve the water problem, because those people would still need to live somewhere. And if they're going to live down in Gilroy or San Martin, number one, they're going to have to drive farther, that's more congestion on the roads, and they're more likely to have single-family homes there, which use up a lot more water. So that would actually make our water problem worse. So regionally, we actually need to have people living closer to their work. We need to support families who do want to live in single-family homes, have that option, because that does use less water. Can also keep our existing single-family homes, because other people want that, but it's good to have both those options. This is actually why we need experienced leaders on Sunnyvale City Council who actually understand the connections between these issues, because if we take a simplistic approach, simplistic solution, that actually makes things worse in the long run. Thank you.
Mr. Fraser.
Andy Fraser, seat one. So regarding the idea that high-density housing is actually a solution to our water problems, this is yet another point where my opponents and I disagree. The key thing that we need to, the most, well, the best opportunity we have, again, is to improve our recycled water capacity and our network. And again, number one to do that is replacing the water pollution control plant, which right now does not produce enough recycled water, and it doesn't produce high enough quality water. Right now, it's a little bit too high in salinity. So that has to be replaced soon, because it's about 50 years old. That will give us a much bigger capacity. There's also been some on-and-off programs to work with other cities to share recycled water. This was called the Intertile Project. First it was off, it may be on again, hopefully it'll be back on soon, because some cities, if you produce too much recycled water, if you can't use it right away, you have to, at some point, wind down your production and then ramp it up again. But once we replace the water pollution control plant and have a bigger supply, we have to build out the network. Right now, only the northern third of the city is supplied with recycled water. We have 20 parks, golf courses, and sports facilities in the city. Only eight of them are irrigated with recycled water. And parks are like the biggest waste of potable water. And again, regarding the Wolf Road, the important thing about the Wolf Road trunk isn't so much getting the water to Apple, it is providing a trunk that provides recycled water to the southern part of the city.
Mr. Merrick.
Thank you. Tap Merrick for council seat three. Mr. Griffith incredibly stated that all I want are single-family homes. That time has come and gone. The city used to be 7% rentals in 1970. Now it's about 55, 50% rentals, 49%, somewhere in there. I'd like to see more homeownership. And that doesn't necessarily mean single-family homes, but it does mean homeownership. And somebody scoffed at my idea of bringing water down from Oregon, but they scoffed at the idea of the Hoover Dam and bringing water to LA, or building the canal from the Sierra down to LA. LA would be a population of 20,000 if they didn't have water. So bringing it from Oregon isn't a far reach. It's going to be expensive, but if we want to keep letting people into the state, that's something that we're going to have to consider. And that's going to be a long-term solution, that's not going to be a short-term solution. I would suggest that the city develop perhaps 10 different models of land use landscaping that has limited water use, and they pay for them. And then the residents can go around and look at these 10 different options and say, "Oh, now there's an idea, maybe I'll do that for my yard and help reduce the amount of water." But the water that you put on your lawn actually goes into the aquifer anyway. Thank you.
We're now at audience questions, and I'm going to combine a couple, and just so that you guys know you're ordering Mr. Merrick down in that direction. Nature and ecosystems are often left out of the sustainability conversation.
What was the first word?
Nature.
Nature.
Nature and ecosystems are often left out of the sustainability conversation, yet are important to our quality of life and environment. The last open space in Sunnyvale is the hills of the landfill, and now it is discussed as a site for a variety of intensive recreational uses and solar development. What is your view of the best land use on the landfill? And related to that is, what do you think about the Stevens Creek Trail? Should it be extended to connect the Bay Trail to the Ridge Trail? Yes, and why or why not? So Mr. Merrick, you're first.
That doesn't work. Tap Merrick, seat three. I certainly think that it's important to save the ecosystems. My parents were avid bird watchers, and they would take me out and point out to the burrowing owls, and of course, being colorblind and not very good with my eyes, I could never see them. But I appreciated what they appreciated out of that. But I certainly appreciate nature, and I used to go camping and things like that. And perhaps the dump could be used as, either to reclaim natural gas, which a lot of the dumps are used, and I think we do it even here, but also perhaps that's land that could be used as a golf course, because that happens too, is that they get converted to golf courses. So those are some options there. The Stevens Creek Trail? I am categorically in favor of what neighborhoods want. And I have been through the Stevens Creek Trail neighborhood, and I've got to tell you, they don't want it. And I can appreciate it, it's their neighborhood. Everybody else says, "Oh, you know, we don't care about all your traffic." I'm supporting neighborhoods regardless of the neighborhood. And so, and that's where I'll stand on any issues where neighbors can come together. We brought 140 people in, and the council voted against the rain order.
Mr. Griffith.
Thank you.
Jim Griffith for seat three. I'll start with the Stevens Creek Trail. I believe the trail should be finished. The question is, how can we find a way to finish it that also protects the single-family neighborhoods in that area? A lot of the options that are being proposed simply won't protect those neighborhoods, and I'm skeptical that they should even be pursued. I think there are options to complete the trail without impacting the neighborhoods. The challenge, and unfortunately, we're kind of in a situation where they're all not optimal solutions, and we're going to have to find the best of bad solutions. But I believe we can do it without protecting Stevens Creek neighborhood and the West Valley neighborhood just to the east of it. And I would like to see us continue and explore that and see what we can come up with. The landfill is going to be a little bit tricky, and I want to bring some of the same protections to the landfill that we have in Baylands. There are burrowing owl habitats there. We do not allow dogs in the Baylands, simply because they go after the burrowing owls. Whatever we do, we need to be doing those same sort of protections. There are a couple of opportunities that are being pursued, like animal assisted happiness. Somebody suggested a dog park. I don't believe that's the right thing for that area. I don't think a golf course is going to work simply because it's not flat enough, when every time you hit a golf ball, it rolls down into the street. I don't think you can really play golf there. But I think there are some opportunities to preserve it as more or less open space with some recreational opportunities that will protect the open space and the nature aspect of that area.
Mr. Magania.
Gustavo Magania, seat number two. So I can recall, ever since I was young, I used to go to different creeks. That was something I used to do for fun. The one by, the one on Fair Oaks by San Miguel, I used to, you know, go with my friends right there, go see the crawfish down there. Currently, I live by the creek in Lakewood in the back, you know, I have fond memories taking my little sister and my little brother to go see the ducks back there and the larks. So I strongly believe in having areas like that, and having access for citizens to these types of ecological, ecologically important areas. Because you can go, growing up in a place where all you see is housing and development isn't the same as, you know, growing up with nature around you. And you know, so that's something that I was strongly advocate for, for leaving areas like the landfill area open space in order for the ecosystem to thrive here in Sunnyvale. Something I would propose would be kind of a mixed use for that area. You have a big portion of it, you know, curbed off so that you can have the ecosystem to thrive and not be damaged by human development or human intrusion. But you can also have part of it, you know, create a slight trail or part of it be open, so you can have the new youth or the new parents taking their kids out there to go see the animals, both from a safe distance, so we don't damage their ecosystem. And that's what I would propose.
Mr. Hendricks.
So as far as the landfill, my name's Glenn Hendricks, seat two. As far as the landfill component, I believe there was a meeting several nights ago I wasn't able to attend, where people were able to come in and talk, again, trying to get community input to see what it is that people want in Sunnyvale to be done in that spot. My personal opinion is, even though the landfill is not what you'd call original nature habitat of what was done here, I prefer to see, let's have it stay more of what would be as close to original nature habitat as what you could have. I'm not, I'm a big proponent of solar power, but I don't think we should build a solar farm out there. I think there are plenty enough rooftops and other structures in Sunnyvale that we can go ahead and build plenty of other solar locations on. I have said for multiple times, what greater name than the name of our city, Sunnyvale, as being a proponent of what we're doing with solar power? So I think that we can go ahead and have lots of solar, a solar farm doesn't have to be there. As far as the Stevens Creek Trail, I too would like to see, in a concept, we would like to see the Stevens Creek Trail completed. The real question is how. Again, we're having community input, this is going on, multi-city, this is a resource that borders the city, and there are multiple communities that need to be involved here. I know some people have concern that they don't like that the way the community has been engaged, and there are certain issues going on there. But I believe that that is the right way to try and do that. We have to have, believe in the process of having community involvement in coming up with solutions.
Mr. Hoffman.
I know, Steve. Okay, Steve Hoffman, seat two. Well, I'm sorry to break the bad news to you, but you cannot have ecosystems and development. They contradict each other. You either leave the land alone and let it be an ecosystem, or you develop it. Same thing with the Stevens Creek. Right now, it's an ecosystem, and I'm talking about the properties behind the residence houses over there. It's an ecosystem, there's a lot of life that lives over there. You cannot go ahead and develop it and then say that you're in favor of ecosystems. Same thing with other areas. Same thing with Butcher's Corner, for example. It's a farmland right now. You cannot go ahead and develop it and then say that you're in favor of ecosystems. If you're in favor of it, then you need to make that into an ecosystem, make it into some sort of a natural place where children can go ahead and play. And I'm not talking about lawns, and I'm not talking about swing sets, I'm talking about maybe a little forest that kids can go ahead and play. When I was a kid, there was a forest behind our school, and I've got tremendous fond memories from going into the forest. Now, of course, somebody owns that, somebody would need to purchase it from the city. It would be nice if we were managing our finances successfully so that the city could actually afford to purchase that piece of land and do with it what we want to do with it. Thank you.
Mr. Larson.
Gustav Larson, seat one. On the landfill, I think it's very important to preserve the ecosystem that is there. I had attended one of the community outreach meetings a few weeks ago, and almost all of the residents who were there were in favor of keeping it more or less as it is now. I think people really appreciate and value what's out there. I love going out there, it's peaceful, it's a wonderful way to just get away for a short while, and it's closed by, and we need to keep that. Access is also important. I think so people can enjoy the area, appreciate it, not so much that it drives away the wildlife or interferes with them, but for example, on the backside of one of the landfills already, Yahoo employees will go out there on their breaks and enjoy it. So it's, I think it's a real asset to that area. For the Stevens Creek Trail, I'm also supportive of the concept, and I think there is more work to do on finding a route, a solution that's really going to work for everyone, because community input is really, really important, and community buy-in is essential. I think the Stevens Creek Trail has an opportunity to be a north-south connector for those who would like to bicycle and give us an important route through the city. Thank you.
Mr. Fraser.
Yeah, Andy Fraser, seat one. Last month, I attended a community meeting about the landfill area, and I went into that meeting with two great ideas. I said, "Two things we need there are a playground and a dog park." And about 60 minutes later, I was turned around 180 degrees. I didn't understand at the time that a dog park, even if it's contained, will scare away older birds within a large distance. And one of the key habitats at the landfill is the bird population, same with the burrowing owls, who are technically birds, but slightly different case, because they live in the ground. One of the proposals that came up that was very good is this animal-assisted habitat. It's a petting zoo that's based down in Gilroy, and they work with special needs children who respond to animals. They'd like to move back up here, so they're looking at the landfill, they're looking to be given permission to move up to the landfill and basically provide that service to the schools, Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, Mountain View. To wrap up, the Stevens Creek Trail, if the Stevens Creek Trail, bike trail, had been built 50 years ago before the homes went in, it would have been a wonderful addition to the city. The problem is, the houses are there. I did support the feasibility study, because they studied the issue, what are the various trail alignment alternatives, what makes sense? The results are in, and unfortunately, none of them do. So at this point, I don't see any possible way to come up with a successful Stevens Creek Trail, and I oppose it.
Thank you. Bicycling is an effective way to mitigate many serious problems caused by our current transportation habits. Yet it is not seen as a realistic option by most people due to dangerous road conditions. You agree that bicycle accommodation should be a high priority, and what specific steps will you take to address the safety issues? And I know that in Mountain View, Stevens Creek Trail is considered part of the bike access north in the north-south direction. So this is going to start with Andy Fraser and move down to Mr. Griffin.
Again, Andy Fraser, again, seat one. So Sunnyvale is a great bicycle community. I heard from one of the well-known bicyclists in the city, he said last week that one of the reasons he moved to Sunnyvale was because it was such a great bike community. He can work at so many places in Silicon Valley and bike to those, bike to those buildings from his home. One of the most interesting, there are two really interesting projects going up that may come up soon. One, again, as I said earlier, the east-west channel. The east channel is a good north-south route that runs the entire height of the city. It runs very close to the Apple campus, it's straight. The VTA is working with, working for producing funding so that the channel can be upgraded to bicycle and pedestrian access. Another one is the Mariupol Bridge. Again, this is not the Mariupol Overpass, which everybody seems to be against. There's a proposal, there's decent talk about building a bridge at the north end of Mariupol, over 101, just for bicycles and pedestrians only. Again, another important north-south connection. And another thing I'd like to see is, the city should be requiring businesses, new businesses and retail and commercial sites to provide bicycle lockers for bicyclists. It's great if you can bike to the Safeway and It's great if you can bike to the safe way and buy your groceries, but if your bike gets stolen or damaged while you're in there, it doesn't do much good. So more bike lockers, east-west channel improvements and a Mary Avenue bicycle pedestrian bridge.
Gustav Larson, seat one. So actually, as new developments do come in, there are requirements for bicycle parking, mixture of bicycle lockers and then non-lockers but exposed parking spaces. That's something we certainly look at on the planning commission and something that we talk about, even the location of those non-projects. And we also need to complete our network of bicycle lanes and bicycle trails. Again, on the planning commission, we've had several projects along some of the channels and we've worked with those developers to get funding or accommodations for the trail when it comes in. So we are working on that already and that is very important. I look forward to that going, to happening, that happening. And we need some north-south and east-west bike boulevards. Some cities like Palo Alto have some very good bike boulevards where it's really a continuous path. We have pieces of that. We don't have complete boulevards. And I think that would be very helpful. Also, for safety, buffered bike lanes by creating a safe space between cars and bicycles that protects the bicyclists. And I think more people would ride their bicycles if it were safer. I've heard numerous people say that, just as I've been walking precincts, knocking on doors. People say, I would love to ride my bike to work, but it's just not safe. Thank you.
Steve Hoffman.
Steve Hoffman, seat two. I actually used to be an avid cyclist until I had two children and then I stopped cycling simply because my wife told me, well, you know, if you get hit by a car, it's not just you, it's going to be affecting other people. And so I haven't ridden my bike now for about 15, 16 years. Safety is the number one issue. My vision for bicycles is not just the people that are avid cyclists, the ones that will go anywhere with their bicycle, night, day, rain, shine, rain or sunny. My vision is that everybody uses their bicycle. Nobody's afraid of going on their bicycle. When I was in the Netherlands just recently, you see older ladies, big ladies, and they moving on their bicycle. I mean, they're moving fast. I don't know if I could keep up with some of those ladies. And they do it and they do it on a regular basis, but they do have a system and it's an elaborate system. And it's a system where they have traffic lights for bicycles and they've got separate lanes and it's a system that actually works and that will be the only way to bring bicycling to the masses. And just like we're talking about putting all these VTA and all these light rail empty trains that are occupying a lot of space, I would say, put in bicycle lanes and working on that would be much healthier for our society.
Glenn Hendricks, seat two. So part of the problem with doing it is the way that the city was originally laid out. And it wasn't laid out to have bicycles and cars cohabitate together on the roads. So we're finding a way to go ahead and evolve, finding places where we can go ahead and increase where bike lanes are. It's just Duane recently was another street where we're going to go ahead and be able to, the city's going to go ahead and add bike lanes. So I think we need to continue to do that. But one of the things that has to happen is we need to go ahead and have a lot more education. Education primarily starting with drivers. If you looked at 20 or 30 years ago, there was a lot of issues about education for how to have drivers look out for motorcycles. Maybe we need to have an increase in education to make sure drivers know about bicycles and watch out for that. Not only bicycles, but pedestrians. I've been a witness to two different accidents or collisions is the right word to use where a car has run into a bike in a crosswalk and that's just inattention by the driver. So we need to go ahead and have education, try and get people to understand this ties in with the safe routes to schools and things like that. And we also need to have more education to the people who could be riding bikes or who could go out and walk to understand the benefits and that it's okay and that yes, you need to be careful when it's out there. But we shouldn't go ahead and try and create the idea of bike riding, that it is this thing that should be completely feared and stayed away from. You should find places to ride your bike within the skill set that you have and the roads that you'd be operating on.
Mr. Magani.
Gustav Magani, seat number two. So the thing I see is there are various ways we can tackle this issue. And I think one of the best ways we can do this is by helping to foster and create a culture of bike riding within the city. And the way we can do this is we start young. You can, I kind of talk about other people coming in from other cities telling me for the bike riding because it's, you know, they think it's better here. But I think a solid way to do this in a long-term plan is you start young. You get kids interested and you have, you create roads to be safe for all the young children to be able to ride their bikes to the elementary school, to their middle school. And you instill in them a love for this bike, for bike riding and that will carry them through their entire lives, whether they stay in Sunnyvale or not. So that's just a benefit for the entire state, entire country. But I think ways that we can do that is by the city showing that we do care about the ability for people to use bikes. One proposal that I think was great, done in San Jose recently, was the bike sharing program, you know, where you can, you know, rent the bike, you can take it to another station, drop off the bike right there and just be on your way. You don't have to worry about, you know, if someone's going to steal your bike if you dropped it off. And if you want to rent another one, you can do it when you come out. I think having proposals like that and doing things where we encourage and promote bike riding in the city, that's how we're going to help Sunnyvale in the short term and in the long term.
Mr. Griffith.
Jim Griffith, seat three. Gustav was right about the bike sharing. A number of our local cities have it. We should looking to bring it into Sunnyvale as soon as we can. I think if anybody doesn't think that bike safety is an issue, I want you to just look back two or three years ago, actually three or four years ago, when one of our residents got hit at the intersection of Evelyn and Mary. And the reason why is that person was a commissioner on our Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Bike safety is definitely a serious problem and one of the reasons why it happened was it happened in an area where our connectivity is not good. We have any number of very good routes through the city, but they're not all connected to each other, particularly when we start looking east-west. Making sure that they have safe routes to go east-west. For instance, if you're coming from the north side, coming down Borregas, once you hit Maude, what do you do? There aren't really any good answers and we need to improve that connectivity so that it actually is reasonable for you to get them all the way from the north side to the south. The past four years, we've made some good progress. We have the new bridges over Borregas that make it possible to bike up to the north side. But we need to be taking concepts like complete streets seriously. Complete street says every street should be equally designed for cars and bikes and pedestrians and every form of transportation. We need to take safe routes to school seriously because if bikes are important, the most important one is kids on bikes. Making, protecting our kids so that they can bike to school has to be a priority and it's all going to come down to the little things at the little intersections.
Mr. Merrick.
Thank you. Tap Merrick, old enough to remember riding my bicycle to school in the snow and in the rain, walking uphill both ways. It's amazing to me that children, you know, have to have rides to school. Right now, I'd love to see that disappear. I've suggested walk pooling at schools. I think that roads are dangerous. They don't make the bike lanes wide enough so that you're forcing a bicyclist to ride on the cement part. And we need to get the cars off of the streets where possible and into driveways and garages. And that will make the neighborhood safer to ride bicycles. So those are things that I would encourage enough. Get rid of your $200 that you've stored in your garage and put your $50,000 car in the garage instead and protect it from the elements and maybe it'll last a few years longer. So I think, you know, I think safety is really critical. And I don't feel, I ride my bicycle well until I started canvassing. I ride my bicycle a half an hour every day just to get out and exercise my artificial knees. So it's important. Thank you.